Seconded by Kathy Bush. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries eight zero. Okay, first item on our agenda this morning. We'll be dealing with the suicide prevention regulations from our meeting yesterday, our discussion, and I'll be looking for a motion to approve, to adopt the proposed suicide prevention regulation ninety-one thirty-one thirty-two. It will be a roll call vote. Scott Gordon is here to provide us the agency response.
Thank you. Good morning. If you would want to turn to page sixty-nine of your materials, that's what I'll be referring to. Page sixty-nine. It's actually page three of the regulations, but the first two pages have nothing to do with what we're discussing. You've received two comments, both in writing, in reference to the proposed regulations. The first comment was a question by email that a substitute teacher had regarding certification of some sort, and whether or not substitute teachers would have access to this. The answer is yes, they have access to it, and it's up to the schools to decide if they want their substitute teachers to go through the training or not. The materials are available. If the schools want to have the subs go through the training, so be it. If the substitute, if someone that only works as a substitute on occasion, if she wanted to get access to the training materials and do this on her own as kind of a qualification to be a sub, the materials are there. That doesn't really require any change to the regulation. And you'll recall that these regulations aren't certification regulations, these are just school accreditation regulations. The second written comment that you've received was from the Joint Committee on Rules and Regulations. They had a concern regarding the definition or the phrase "programs for all school staff." To give you some context, and I fielded this question a couple of times. Question comes up, what does "all school staff" mean? Because we don't define staff in the regulation, anywhere in this regulation. I will tell you that this has already gone through the Department of Administration and the Attorney General's Office. They felt that it was sufficiently defined to just refer to "all school staff." I don't think the field really has any question as to what staff means, except when it comes to bus drivers. Because many bus drivers, as you know, actually work through companies or contract companies, so they're not actually employees of the school district. They would be subcontractors. Apparently, comments came up during the meeting with the Joint Committee that, well, we want, our intention was for all bus drivers to have to go through this training. My recommendation, and we can change this if you want, we can change it to the word "staff," which actually I think would be more, or change it to the word "employee," which I think would be more limiting than the phrase "staff." If schools want to have all of their bus drivers, including the subcontractors, go through this training, they can. I will tell you that I've discussed this with the attorney for KASB, and they had the same interpretation that I do, that subcontractors generally are not staff. And if they were to be required to include this in the contracts they have with the busing companies, well, that would, to a certain extent, increase their costs. That was one of the, kind of the golden points of this bill when it was passed, was there supposed to be a zero fiscal impact on school districts. The concern is if you change the definition of staff, or if you change this regulation to include everyone, including subcontractors, that could potentially increase the cost for the schools. Again, I think it's, it's one of those things that could be left up to the local schools. And in all candor, you're going to be seeing another set of regulations on accreditation. The entire accreditation system is being revamped in the next four to six months. We can take this out for a run for a while, see if we have any issues with it, and if it needs to be changed the next time you're changing regulations, so be it. But I wanted you aware of that conversation and that concern, just in case legislation tries to define what "staff" means come January. I just didn't want there to be any surprises. Other than that, I'll answer any questions you all may have.
So the surprise here is that "all" does not mean "all," or could mean "all."
I think it's the, the, the term "staff" is...
All staff.
All, to me, it makes, it's either they're staff or they're not.
Right.
So if you consider them to be staff...
So if we change this right now, we'd have to send it back, and we'd have to come back before us again with the modification, and then we'd vote on it later. We would not vote on it today.
If you made a, you could ask for a small change. For example, if you wanted to change it from "staff" to "employee" and adopt it in that way, I believe that's a small enough of a change to where it would get approved through the Department of Administration and the Attorney General's Office again, but it wouldn't have the same sixty-day waiting period, and you wouldn't have a public hearing again.
They would just approve it.
They would just approve it, say, okay, that language is fine. If that's the language you want to use, that's a small change.
Does that usurp the original intention?
This is where, so the original bill that was passed in the legislature, just were, it was a licensure issue. They wanted all licensed teachers and administrators to receive the training. Then, we were already working on a regulation to take to you anyway, and we felt that it was better to get more people involved in this training, not just the teachers and administrators. So we used the phrase "staff," took that to the committees while it was under discussion, and said, "This is actually what we want to do. We think this is much better than making this a licensure issue." They agreed. In all honesty, I wrote the regulation that's now in the bill. My intent was not for subcontractors to be included. You know, the person that you hire to put up drywall or to fix a bathroom that's not on your staff, I wouldn't expect them to go through this training. So I don't know how you... Does it defeat the purpose of the bill? I don't think so.
Go ahead. Randy?
I agree with Scott. When we were initially approached in December of fifteen, the, the Jason Flapp Foundation asked, through licensure and renewal of licensure, to have teachers and administrators. We felt it should be everyone employed in the school district on a permanent basis, and we, in fact, we're leading the nation through this and doing it. But we never intended, if you were hiring someone to cut your lawn, that they had to go through the training. This would be an employee, staff of the school district, and, and we've gone above and beyond, and we think it was the right thing to do to go above and beyond what we, what we're doing. But it was never our intent, again, to, you're in a bond construction process, and the people are putting on a new roof, have to go through the training because, you know, they're a subcontractor for you in terms of that. That was never the intent of the bill, and I don't think it circumvents the bill, Mr. Chairman. You know, our intent was, everyone's on the payroll, the staff, that's, that's who we would have trained.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think school staff is understandable. I think folks in schools know what that is. I think if people want to have their subcontracted bus drivers go through that, they can still do that. So to me, this is plenty clear enough, and as Randy said, we're going above and beyond what the initial intent was. So I'm quite comfortable with what it is, and I think schools will know what it means. I don't think that'll be a problem.
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to echo what Kathy just said. I think "staff" is the right term to use. I think sense of reasonableness is the folks managing our schools will understand the effect and the intent of the regulations, and so I, my counsel would be to leave it at "staff."
Ken Willard?
Are there not some cases in which school districts have permanent staff that does their lawns and that sort of thing? I mean, they're hired by the school district, they're not contracted out? Would this apply to them?
Yes. The, to answer the first half of your question, do school districts have their own lawn mowers?
Yeah.
Yes. They have their own crews that do that kind of stuff. It's more left up to the schools, in all honesty, to decide, okay, which staff are you going to have go through this?
Okay.
Do you think the person that is there once a week to mow the lawn, do they need to go through this training? That's up to the school. That's very different than, what about your cafeteria workers and paraprofessionals?
So this would leave it up to the school districts to decide the appropriate people to be included in the training?
They would have to certify to us through the normal accreditation process. We say, "You are required to get this training to all staff." Are you getting it to all staff or not?
Yeah.
And then they, they tell us if they've gotten it to all staff, so...
All right. Sally Cobble?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the proposed suicide prevention regulations ninety-one thirty-one thirty-two.
Seconded by Deana Horst. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll make the vote. All those in favor, roll call. Oh, I missed my own directions. Okay, just too eager.
All right. John Bacon? Kathy Bush?
Yes.
Carolyn Campbell?
Yes.
Sally Cobble?
Yes.
Deana Horst? Jim McNeese?
Yes.
Jim Porter?
Yes.
Steve Roberts?
Yes.
Janet Waugh?
Yes.
Ken Willard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is monthly reports and requests for future agenda items. First, we'll have reports legislative. Ken, and Deana?
Except that the election is over.
Well, thank God.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
You've, good job.
Congratulations, Ken.
I heard we're already gearing up for the next one. Oh, my gosh. Deana?
And we got the list yesterday.
Yes. They all provide us.
See who all of your, your elected, who all was elected that serves your, your...
Okay. Anything else on legislative? Okay, thank you very much. Policy, Janet? You must have had a meeting.
Oh, yes, we've had several, and we decided that the policy was just wonderful, and we really didn't want to do anything else, but we just enjoyed getting together and meeting.
Thank you.
Is that right, Kathy and Jim?
Communications, Sally?
We're working on the same thing we've always been working on, and I just love Denise and her staff.
We will be doing the postcards again, and we've already started looking at that, and we'll be bringing back in December, hopefully, some templates that we'll be, we'll be using next year. We encourage you to, to check your representatives and contact your representatives at that time. I guess it might as well do it now, but I apologize for not doing it when we started, but Ann Maas here, who will be our new member starting in January. We have an orientation plan for Ann that will start in December. We're actually, is it November?
November.
November, okay. And we're, we're looking forward and welcome you, you know, and hopefully, we won't scare you off with the orientation. Kathy and Sally on the Teacher Vacancy and Supply Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sally nominated me to report, so I guess I drew the short straw. We did meet, have a good group, a small, I know it's about twelve members, I think, met, and most all of us were there. We started the day really getting everybody up to speed on some of the information that the Blue Ribbon Committee had done. People had access to that document already, but we still kind of reviewed some of that material, began to look at what data is already out there as far as teacher vacancies. So that was a good, for Sally and I, was a good review, but for everybody else, some, a few of those people were on that committee, but others were not, so it was a good place to get us all kind of at the same place there. And then, as we concluded, we basically came up with, I think, about five different focus areas we're going to look at, and then we're going to kind of decide where we want to start with these. We started, one of the areas we talked about was alternative elementary. I mean, who would have ever thought that we would have had elementary vacancies as a concern area in the state of Kansas, not only the state of Kansas, but nationwide? So we're going to look and see, you know, there's some concerns about having an alternative pathway for elementary, but we're going to look at it and see if there's options, and if there are, what would be some viable options, so that's one. And this committee is teacher vacancy and supply, so really, as part of the supply piece, we're looking at, what do we do to keep our folks? So the mentoring piece, as we saw when we got the report from the Blue Ribbon Committee, we're not necessarily seeing a graying of the profession, we're seeing a greening of the profession. So how do we keep those young folks that are in their first five years? So we're going to look at the mentoring piece and see if there's some things that we can do to help keep more folks in the profession, so that will be an area of focus. And then we're going to look at the comprehensive science as far as really it's a high school piece, and I know yesterday we just approved the regs for the various areas of science, and as you all probably know, I mean, this will certainly be somewhat controversial because right now, the science areas, there is a biology license, there's a chemistry license, there's a physics license, and there's an earth science license. I probably forgot one or two, but they have a tendency to license within content areas versus, say, a comparable area, which is math. And math, they don't have an algebra license, or a geometry license, or a calc trig license, they have a math license. So some areas are particularly interested in looking at a comprehensive license as far as a six-twelve. There's already a comprehensive science for five through eight, so some folks are interested in looking at that. So we're going to take a look at that. We're also going to take a look at student teaching. Are there some ways we can look at the student teaching that maybe those folks, we change that internship piece a little bit, and look at some other options there? Because one of the folks in our committee said, basically, the students are paying to work for free when they're doing their student teaching, even though they're not really teachers of record, but there are, are there some ways we can really look at student teaching on that piece? And I don't have it down in my notes as a separate piece, but we really had quite a big conversation about special education. And I know we're getting ready to see the initial licensure, special ed information coming to us. My understanding is next month. I certainly hope so. But we're also looking at, are there ways to look at an alternative piece for special ed also? We already have alternative licensure in the secondary, that, you know, math, science, English, social studies, foreign language, you know, all sorts of folks can go into the alternative route and do a master's program if they have an undergraduate degree and do the alternative route. So one of the things folks seem to be interested in is, is that a viable option with special education? So those are some of the areas, the primary areas we're going to look at. One of the things that we're, we also talked about, which we've talked about at this table, is the restrictions on the retirees, you know, as far as the, them being able to come back to work. So that, that's a concern. That was brought up in the committee. So we're meeting again in December, so we'll, it's after this meeting, so it'll be in January where we have a next report for you. Folks are very interested in really, we'll probably prioritize these and take a look at one or two first, and then begin to look at some of the other ones, so... But it's a group that's very interested in getting things done and getting things out, so we'll be able to move forward and bring recommendations, first to the PPC and then to this board, so... Sally, anything else?
You did raise...
Oh, thank you. So that's your report.
Well, thank you very much. Very comprehensive. Glad you guys had your first meeting. You mentioned, Kathy, one thing that, you know, I don't think there's any of them that aren't controversial.
Yeah, right.
You know, they're going to challenge us, but the issue challenges us, and it's a national issue, it's not just a local issue, you know? And in some cases, we make broad assumptions about where vacancies exist, you know, and sometimes the data doesn't support that.
Right.
You know, and there's history involved and, and culturalization, and this is the way we've always done it, and it's going to challenge us.
One of the things that I thought was kind of interesting is, we talked a little bit about doing an alternative license, like with maybe paraprofessionals, because I think there's, well, I know there's one university who's looking at that, and basically flipping the program, and where they're going to do the pedagogy first with these paraprofessionals, and then do the content, general college content with a corresponding community college. And so they're flipping the program, looking at flipping the program, and so kind of an interesting concept there that some folks are looking at, and it's a little bit of an alternative. And are there some ways to get some of these paraprofessionals who already live in areas where there are shortages, particularly rural areas, and what can we do? Because they don't want to leave home. They want to stay where they are, so this could impact some, really, some of your areas, probably Sally and Jim and Deana, maybe some of yours, to, to look at some of these programs as far as, is there a little bit different way to, to just do that program? So I think there's some interesting things out there, and some folks willing to try some different things, so that's kind of what we're going to dig into.
Okay. Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. I appreciate the report. My appointee was a little bit disappointed in some of the conversation that was, that she was a part of. So my question is, the meetings, are they open to the public?
Sure. I don't know why not.
Can we get a notice? Because I would like to just come and maybe observe and listen. And I think it probably, and I haven't had a chance to really sit down and visit with her in depth, but I think it's probably that last one that she was maybe a little bit disappointed in the conversation on the alternative licensure for paraprofessionals. Because what I'm told is, her concern was how it appeared that maybe there was like, just not willing to consider, consider this. And of course, I wasn't there to see, or to hear. So I would like to be able to come and just sort of...
Sure.
I'm not going to say anything, because I understand all that, but, but, but anyway, but that's my concern that, because I know that we have a lot of paraeducators that are wonderful, motivated, they're educators at heart, and so I'm very much interested in that one, as the others. Thank you.
Was there any conversation regarding alternative delivery systems, you know, that the, whether it's through the community colleges, or through universities for dual credit, online?
Yes, yeah.
You guys are talking about that?
Yeah.
Okay. Because for a lot of smaller districts, and, and my experience is only in my area, but when Randy and I were traveling, a lot of schools are using those alternative delivery systems, seemingly effectively.
Yeah, there's some, I think there's some distance learning opportunities that can be availed.
Yeah, yeah. And we already have a wide variety of alternative opportunities in career and tech ed, and STEM, and those things, so, and it is going to be controversial. It's, it's not going to be the way school has been, you know? So we'll see. Looking forward to the reports. Thank you.
You bet.
Another very interesting committee that's meeting, the Juvenile Justice Oversight. Janet, you have a committee report?
Yes, thank you very much. We did meet once. Basically, we kind of just went over what our responsibilities were. We elected a chair. Senator Greg Smith will be the chair of the committee. We've established the next meeting for sometime in February. I'm not sure exactly when it is, but we discussed our responsibilities. I have a whole list of responsibilities. I've got a whole book here. If anyone is interested, I'll be happy to share it with you. Basically, we're supposed to kind of evaluate and monitor what's going on, how this is working, and make recommendations if changes are necessary. I discussed this with several of you. I have a little bit of, a few concerns myself. First of all, I'm the only person on the, on the committee representing education, and it impacts education pretty strongly, you know? So I think that, and Dale brought me some information from some meetings he'd attended from superintendents, and I have also reached out to my superintendents for input regarding this, and there are several concerns that has been raised, and I'm going to suggest, Dale suggested, I think it's a good idea, that maybe we have some administrators come and speak to the committee. I'm going to ask them if we could allow that to see, to share concerns and, and, you know, discuss what their concerns are, you know, so that we could look at this. But anyway...
Janet?
Yes.
The, the committee had public hearings.
Yes. The committee?
No. Who had the public hearings?
The, when they passed the, when they did the...
Recently, there were hearings.
The legislature had public hearings.
Yes.
No, we haven't had, no, Dale met with some, during his meetings, these expressed, they discussed this a little bit, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Is what Dale brought to me.
Okay.
But I would also like to ask each of you to reach out to your constituency and see if there are any concerns that come up prior to me going back to that meeting in February, because I need to know what's happening around the state. If this, if it's a challenge, if there's been no challenges. I mean, the concern, I think a lot of it is, is there's going to be extensive paperwork for them to fill out, you know, which is just, you know, more paperwork, which, you know, tends to be challenging. So anyway, I think it's going to be very interesting, but I've got lots of questions, and if any of you have questions, please let me know, you know?
Which Senate bill?
Three, six, seven.
Wasn't that the same number that we had yesterday on privacy?
This is juvenile justice, is what this is.
What was the, what was the Senate bill number for the privacy yesterday? And they were different years, so it's possible. They are the same. Oh, okay.
And then, of course, one of my big concerns, I attended a meeting in Wyandotte County where they were, where they invited everyone to come attend to discuss this bill, anyone connected with it. And, and when they were discussing it, one of the points they brought up was that the funding, according to the bill, according to the funding, they say, because they intend to release minor offenders from juvenile justice and put them back in the system, because, and I understand that, because frankly, if they're minor offenders and they're put in with kind of the hardcore kids, that makes them hardcore, so it's better to keep them out of the system if we can. However, it creates new challenges, and so therefore, the funding that is saved from, they're going to close several of these juvenile justice facilities, should be returned to the communities and the schools. That's what I understood from the bill, what I had been hearing about it early on. And I asked that question at that meeting. I said, they said, because they kept talking about any money saved would go back to communities. And I said, I have a question. And I said, my question is, it was my understanding, the funding that was saved would go back to communities and schools, because both of them have additional costs, you know, related to this. And they said, well, you know, schools are under a different funding system, so there's really no need for schools to receive any of this funding. And anyway, that concerned me greatly, and then, of course, it kind of went into the point that there probably wasn't even going to be any money going anywhere, because they really, you know, they, if they save money, they've got it kind of going somewhere else. But anyway, those are concerns of mine, and...
Jim Porter?
So... Either that, or they've already put it in schools.
Anyway, so, but I would appreciate any of you here, anything, please let me know, because I would, I would be willing to share it with the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended two of those meetings with superintendents, one in Green Bush and one here in Topeka, where, where they all did discuss this issue with them. There's a great deal of paperwork involved, memorandum of understanding with police departments, and basically, what the message was, that most school districts already have relationships with their local police departments, because they, they work with them. And how often, the question came up, how often do you actually call the police? And since most of the, my constituents are relatively rural, the answer was once every three or four years. And the, a couple of places where there were larger school districts, maybe once or twice a year, so. So this is a very complicated procedure to solve maybe some problems that do not exist. And I think that, and there was just, there was just a general belief in both of the meetings that I went to, this doesn't mean anything, except create more paperwork for us. So I'm passing that on to you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Keep us informed. Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot. Any other committee reports or agenda items for the future? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for your leadership and stewardship of our board the last couple of years. I think you run a good meeting, and I don't know if you'd want to continue on or if it's just time for a change, but I'm very grateful. But I was surprised to hear the affirmation yesterday that we don't have failing schools in Kansas. And I would not, I would not characterize it that way. I think when I fail to reach a student, which I have done as a, as an instructor, that's a failure. So I think we need to embrace our failures and figure out how to do that. So how to fix the fundamental flaws in the system. I think there are fundamental flaws in the system. And so I want to address why I, I tend to not vote with the agenda. I think we need to push our agenda more toward changing the way we deliver schools to children whose parents really struggle with modern life. And so my agenda would be to realize that you don't necessarily have to go to teachers' college to be a good teacher, which fits in with a lot of the work being done right now. And that we should stop labeling children by color, and we should push back against the federal government, which we may have a better opportunity to do that in a Trump administration, to actually do away with the federal free and reduced lunch program and say, we're Kansas, and we can feed the children ourselves. And those three elements are why I'm here. And so any of those on future agenda items, I would be welcome to, I would, I would appreciate the opportunity to address those specific solutions. And I realize, maybe it's my engineering background, but I tend to reach for solutions maybe a little quicker than discussions of the problems. But I think I've been at this long enough where I think those solutions are worth pushing and pressing. So those are my three agenda items for the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim Porter?
Thank you, sir. First, the first was just an observation. We have aspiring administrators with us today that may very well have ideas on how we can keep young people in the profession. And if you do, I would encourage you, raise your hand, Kathy. Raise your hand.
Send them a Sally.
That maybe at the break time, if you, if you do, I think that, that your perspective would be very valuable to us, if you have ideas about how we can keep newer or younger people that are, many of whom are leaving within the first five years. We would appreciate you giving us that information. I think that, as far as future issues, I think that we need, I continue to believe that we need to build bridges with the legislature, and I would like to do anything we can between now and January to reach out to those people who are new and, and start building those relationships and building those bridges now. And as I continue to go to superintendent's meetings and visit with small groups of superintendents, the issue of mental health and the challenges of mental health continue to come up. And I would really like for us to have maybe a workshop sometime where we visit with school districts, so we can actually, so we can all understand the challenges they face, so that we might help, might be able to help generate some solutions to those problems. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dina Horst?
Thank you. And actually, Jim just stated one of the things I wanted to, to bring forth, and that is something that I talked about a lot in my campaign. You can't assume that new legislators, while they're friendly, that they're not going to do, make efforts at developing laws that may infringe upon this board. So we need to definitely talk a little more to not just our new legislators, but to our existing, those who are reelected as well, to inform them more specifically about what our positions really are all about and why we exist. And the other thing that I'd like to see is, I serve as the treasurer of the Kansas Art Education Association, and they have been talking about how do we get in front of the board? So, and talk to them. So I told them that I thought I might be able to request that they get that opportunity. And I would suggest that perhaps we include other arts organizations, arts education organizations as well.
You're the officer in the visual arts?
I'm talking, it is.
No, no, I'm just asking.
It is a visual arts.
Okay. So, but you want to broaden that?
But I'm saying, I could see where KMEA might like to come too. And, and I don't know that we need them all at once, but maybe spread out over a period of time, so we know what kind of professional development they're offering to teachers. And I think that one of the, well, in fact, one of the Rose capacities talks about the arts. So we, it seems to me that we need to talk about that component as well.
Very good. Very good. Sally Cobble?
I'd just like to add on a couple of things that Dina said. She, you know, with our, with our needing mentors and that, to get our vision, that I never thought to reach out to the arts as one group that we might need to share that vision with, and them share their vision and, and see if we can't make some connections. I hadn't thought of that. Also, Dina, the communication committee has been working with the legislators. They do know that we want to get Randy in front of them. They also know, they're, they have told us that they will set something up with us after they know who their leadership is on, on the new people. But I don't think it's any too soon for each one of us to reach out to those that are in our districts and say something. But I do have something that came up yesterday, that it could be in a Friday letter, it doesn't have to be before the board, but there's a big blue button. There is a big blue button that you just have to push it, and it does amazing things. Well, I think I need to know more about that big blue button, on what it does and how people know about it. And, huh? Yesterday, in the presentation on the gifted, it's with Tazin. And she talked about this big blue button that can help teachers and everything. Well, I don't know about you guys, but I didn't know anything about a big blue button. And so that's what I said, it could be in the form on the newsletter or, I wasn't the only one that heard the big blue button, did I? Oh, okay.
I know what it was.
Oh, okay. But something that would help.
Sure.
That's so far all I have.
Okay. Okay. Kathy Bush? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To kind of add on to Jim Porter's comment on the mental health and the supports they need, and not only talk to superintendents, it might be interested to talk to what's left of community agencies that are providing some support to the schools. I know, for instance, Communities and Schools still does a lot, and I think there's probably some others, but I, I know that's been, my conversations with administrators that I talk to is the support through community agencies is reduced significantly, so there's not as many resources out for them. So that might be interesting information to have. And then also just with my work on the CACIA board, the classification or potential reclassification, just a couple more comments on that as to what Gary said. They have been doing a lot of work on that. Their committee's been working for probably a year and a half. And they just recently, as Gary said, went out to several committees and then, or several regional meetings. But if you have any feedback, it was, it was an interesting presentation. I think I heard it twice in two days, because of Executive Board and then Board of Directors. But, and interesting conversations among the groups. But any feedback anybody has for me or Jim would be helpful. But as Jim McNeese said, you know, they've been talking about classification for lots of years, so I don't know if anything will get changed, but it may.
History tells us it will. And history says it will be changed again.
Yes, yes.
And, and part of that is the changing dynamics of population.
Absolutely.
You know, we're, we used to be pretty level.
Yeah.
Now we have a lot of the big schools coming in and small schools, and not many in the middle.
But one of the things that was interesting that I learned as being a part of CACIA is the number of small rural schools, and I'm sure Sally knows this, but that have a cooperative agreement as far as teams are concerned. So even though there's maybe a lot of schools within the 1A classification, a lot of them combine their teams and compete together through a cooperative agreement.
Interesting who they combine with.
Which is a great solution for them.
Look at the combinations. There's some interesting combinations. Somebody leapfrogging one district to be with.
So, you know, they're already coming up with some solutions to some of their issues. But so, again, if anybody has any feedback, I don't know when we'll vote on this, but it...
And when you say your vote, CACIA's vote?
Yeah.
On reclassification?
Yeah.
Specifically in football?
Yeah. Well, there's a football one, but then there's a classification one, too. But it would be, it would go to the Board of Directors, but then it would have to go back to the schools. So, you know, it's, it's a multiple step process, so.
And that's one of the, the good things about the Activities Association. It's not just a small group at the top.
Right.
It's basically the members deciding how they want to move. And any classification that's impacted has to approve that impact.
Yes.
Not just the whole group, but that classification can veto, you know, what the whole group wanted to do.
Right.
So Class 3A could say, no, we don't want to do that.
Yep.
You know, it, yeah, that's one thing that people don't realize about the Activities Association, how the members actually do make those decisions.
So again, any feedback, provide that to Jim Porter or, and/or I. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Okay, thank you. Ken?
At the NASB conference, which was excellent, Jim, by the way, I had a chance to visit with one of the NASB board members, Gordon Hendry, from Indiana. And he was telling me about a bill that he had recommended that had gotten passed by the legislature and signed into law, I think in April of this year, by Governor Mike Pence. And I think it went into force in July, but it was the Next Generation, Hoosier Next Generation Scholarship Fund for Teachers. And he sent me a link to it, and I, I don't have the bill, but, but the effect of it was that the legislature provided in the law for a scholarship of X number of dollars, I think $7,500 per year, for students who commit to teach in Kansas, in Indiana schools for five years after the graduation. It goes to only the top 20% of students, so it gets the, the best and brightest involved in it. It's capped at 200 per year for the, to control it, and a, and a dollar cap for, for the students. But it was passed in a bipartisan fashion. Mr. Hendry happens to be a well-respected Democrat in education there, and it was passed on a bipartisan basis by the Indiana Legislature. I think that might be something worth talking about here, something that we could promote, probably, in the next legislative session. And so I just throw that out as...
Gordon Hendry you talked about?
Gordon Hendry, right?
Yeah.
I could send you the link. I could send all of you the link to the information I have on it. I don't have the actual bill. But I think it's a concept that we ought to explore. And we could, we could construct it differently, obviously, but we could construct it so that it would apply to commitment to teaching our high poverty and, and, yeah, rural schools. So we could direct some, we could actually affect some of the problems we've been talking about here this morning, I think, with a bill like that.
Very proactive.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll learn more about it. I'll, I'll get in touch with them.
All right, great.
Yeah, great, thank you. Okay. Board attorneys' report.
I don't have anything for the public portion.
Individual reports by members. Steve, anything? Thank you. Dina?
Hello? I was campaigning.
That did get in the way, didn't it?
I was seeing everybody, but not...
Okay. Jim Porter?
Pass.
Pass. Carolyn?
I'm not passing. And Ms., and Ms. Dina, you did attend, all three of you attended the National State Board.
And it was very good.
Yes, NASB. Anywho, first of all, I'm, I'm going to back up. Excellent conference that the department here put, put on. And we, and I appreciated too, the meeting with the business folks afterwards. Our keynote speaker, this was great. As well as what shocked me was, and I shouldn't say this publicly, because if you ever heard it, but initially Mitch Holt, Holt House, I thought, he's going to be, I had never heard him as a motivational speaker. He was excellent. He was excellent. So again, I just want to thank the department for putting on a wonderful conference, as they always did. Now for NASB, and I'm sure you folks are going to attempt, I hope we, you all can afford Manny, what's his last name? Smith? Scott?
Yeah, Manny Scott.
Manny Scott, to come next year, because he was just unbelievable. And I got down, my, my dear...
Freedom Riders.
Freedom Riders, yes. But I got down there, my thanks to, I'll say Janet, because she was behind the wheel, to Terrence Scott, not Terrence Scott, it's Terrence Roberts, who was one of the Little Rock Nine. And so I, I got to hear most of his presentation that day, which I was very thankful for. And then I had also attended, one of my concerns has always been that we have, the attorneys, they have sessions that I would always want to go to. And one year I snuck out and went to one of theirs instead of, you know, the ones for our committee people, for our members. But this year, they actually had a joint meeting. And so that was, that was, that was, I was happy about that. Just, I have so much, I do have an extra book or two on child abuse and neglect that we need to really, again, continue to focus on as our children here, and what people are doing to them, and how we can try to protect them. And I have to say this, my brother down at the end of the table was talking about not identifying children, and Kansas, we could feed, we could feed them and not take federal money. We would have more children. We have enough children that are homeless and not getting their, their meals as it is. And I think if we had to depend on the legislature or Kansas, we'd have, it would increase. And so that just really concerns me, that we would... And so that just really concerns me that we would ever consider not doing what is best to feed our children. I've served at Capital City Schools and last year, or year before last, we actually were able, we begged, but we received a refrigerator and everything so we could, leftover food from the district would go there so children could take the food home to their little sisters and brothers, not so much that they wanted to eat it, but they were concerned about the children that were not in school anywhere. So I've, I've been hungry, but I've never really been hungry. And so I think that's a concern of mine. I do want to share that I did attend a JAG installation and initiation ceremony. And of course, we all know about that program and it's a wonderful program, but it's, I was very happy to, to be able to speak to those young people. As was the JAG CEO Chuck Knapp, he was also on the program. So I think, I have a lot of notes and I have a couple of books and everything, because I can't just pick up mine. I have to pick up extras if anyone wants one on the child abuse and neglect. And then I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Sally?
I, too, went to the NASB convention. And Jim, I thought it was one of the better ones we've had. So thank you for your leadership in that. And I really personally enjoyed the Times Speaker, the gentleman that worked for the Times. And then I thought our Commissioner just did an outstanding job on the panel. So on that. I have spent most of my time riding in the car with our Commissioner and visiting schools. And I'd say that we keep hearing the same thing pretty well over and over. No teachers, needing alternative routes. Are we going to get some relief on money? But the same, the thing that makes you feel good when you get home, when you're so tired of all of those miles, is the educators that we have in the classroom. We didn't see very many poor ones. We saw some excellent ones. And we saw some that really love those kids. And they're doing what they can do personally for our students. And so that was, it's heartwarming. And at the same time, you almost feel like you're taking advantage of them. There's a fine line there. And, but we saw some very interesting things. I've got a school district I'm really concerned about. It's very remote. I've seen it go downhill since I've been on the board. And I don't know how they're going to bring that thing around, but they have the people there that really care. So I'm, I'm assuming that it will happen. The thing that came out, too, is that for our mission statement, one of the things that we really need is for everybody to cooperate. And so we asked them a lot of questions about their feeder schools, like what community college they go to, what technical school they go to. And I found a problem with one community college that I'm going to call them up and visit with them about a little bit. But then there's places that they just don't have access, that I think Randy has some ideas with the windshield time and the car time, that when he gets through with all the tours, I think it's going to be interesting to, to see what our problem solver comes up with to help the schools out. I've got great hope for that. I'm not seeing any problems that are bigger than we can not handle. I, and I see hope out there after our last general election and our, I mean, our last primary. Of course, we haven't been out after the general. So Randy, thank you for letting me ride with you. I know sometimes it can be challenging. And, but I really enjoyed our visits and I am learning, oh, maybe what the severe, I don't think we ran into anything new that we didn't know about, but we did, we are running into some severity that is very troubling. And the kids love Randy. If any of you've had him on a trip with you, you know that if they put him in front of the kids, you better start going like this to him, because he loves those kids. So I just want to thank the teachers and the educators in my district for the, the care and the love they're giving to our students.
John? Ken?
Really don't have anything else to add. I did, other than going to NASB and appreciated the conference, it was a, you guys did a very nice job setting it up and enjoyed that. It's my first full conference that I went to, so I thought it was well done. A lot of good information. So I would concur with what other people said as far as the NASB conference and then KSDE conference down in Wichita. So enjoyed both of those events. So that's it.
Well, in my report, tomorrow is, is November 11th. It's Veterans Day. It's a, a huge day to say thanks. Many, many communities did it last weekend because it's, weekend gives more access to people. I know in Wichita we had a big parade and celebration, and I know they have them around the state. But thank you to our veterans and those who are serving in the military right now for what you do. And that is a very important choice for our young people and part of our vision for the future. You know, so military is a very viable and important role for our students to, to see as, as part of their future. Thank you very much for your kind words about the NASB conference. I wish I could have been there to enjoy it in a lot of ways. It, but I, I, I was surprised by many of the speakers. It was deliberate that we went for Manny Scott and Terrence, you know, representing equity and excellence and hope for the future. We had some great presentations at all levels. I do want to extend a thank you to Randy for coming out on Saturday morning, which is always the toughest part of a conference, and presenting on our vision and, and our tours. Thank you very much for doing that. But I also want to thank Cindy Lane and Bill Faflick, Cindy from Kansas City and Bill from Wichita, for being part of a, a presentation on schools and improvement and the efforts that our, our large urban areas are doing. They both did a great job in turn, in presenting information about turnaround schools. And that was a, a, a goal of mine is a Kansas representation. There's great things going on in our state. We had an opportunity to, to, to show it off. You know, it got just Kansas City, which happens by default where we were, just to be a mile or two from the great state of Kansas. We just happened to be in that other Missouri thing. But Missouri helped us out a lot. I do want to offer my congratulations and thanks to Ken. He received the NASB Distinguished Service Award at State Night, and Governor Brownbeck was there to help present the award and, and honor his service to our board as well as in a national way. Ken, I'll say it again, you stepped in as, as President before I was here, but then you stepped in again a couple of years, about four years ago, and, and took over the spot of Secretary-Treasurer at a time that was very challenging for NASB. And your foundational efforts have been one of the major factors in our reaching today, you know, stability. So NASB Board of Directors and the NASB folks appreciate very much your, your, your expertise and your dedication to NASB and making it happen. So it was, it was an award well deserved, and I was happy that I was there to present it to you as well as with Governor Brownbeck. So thank you.
May I respond?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I was, it was a wonderful event, and I was humbled and honored more than I can say. And I appreciate the kind words I've received from many of you. It was just an outstanding event, an evening for me, memorable. Thank you.
Thank you. It was great to see your family there and friends and, and former Board Member Dave Dennis, now County Commissioner. Took a few years off and now he's back in the fire.
And I felt badly afterwards. I was remiss in not introducing and recognizing some of those people that were there, especially Dave, but.
You kind of get overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Carolyn Campbell?
I just, I forgot to comment on Mr. Willard's speech. It was beautiful.
It was.
Very sincere from your heart.
And one of the, you know, surprises for me, I was excited to be there, but I was, I was, that State Night was also, and it was hosted at the American Jazz Museum and the National Negro Baseball Hall of Fame, and was open to members. And the feedback from the members of having access and having the Yandau Bulldog Jazz Band there, which was great.
Mine.
There yours, yes. But they were all of ours.
Mine.
It was great.
Could I make one more?
Yeah.
Just a comment about that evening that sticks out in my mind. Scott Johnson, who replaced me as Secretary Treasurer from Georgia.
From Georgia.
From Georgia, was there. And we were going through the baseball, Negro Baseball Museum, and there was a big statue there to Satchel Paige. And he told me that Satchel Paige, that the Major League Baseball would not allow him to get a retirement because of his time in service to the baseball, in baseball. He could not draw a retirement unless he spent 40 days on a roster. And so the Atlanta Braves picked him up like in the 60s.
Picked him up.
Picked him up for 40 days and let, and put him on their roster and, and let him pitch one.
Yes, he did.
Let him pitch one inning. And Scott happened to be at that game when Satchel Paige pitched that, and it was a very emotional and a special time.
Right.
So, yeah, it was just, that museum just brought a lot of things home to me about the way things have been in this country and the progress we're still attempting to make and have made in many regards. But those were, those were really a kind of, well, he was, he was a change, change agent.
Yes, he was.
Yeah, thank you.
And that was one of the surprises. I need to go back.
It was awesome. I'd like to go back again, too.
I was teased by being there that night. So my wife and I are planning to go back here very shortly. And I would recommend to all to take advantage of it. It, it was, I was really, you know, thinking, God, why come I haven't been here? You know, and.
Peachtree Restaurant around. That's a soul food restaurant. That's where you need to eat.
Okay. I got a restaurant, I got a museum. All right. I'm ready. Thank you, Carolyn. You know, the report back from, from the petition, the participants for the NASB conference has been very positive. And thank you for your kind remarks. I'll, I'll forward them on to Chris and the team there. The last thing I'd say about the conference is I have the distinction of being the last President of NASB.
Oh, yes.
We've changed our bylaws and it's now Chairman. And the, the Executive Director is now President and Chief Executive Officer, Chief Oper, Chief Executive Officer. It was a change that was made to, this is what's happening in the organizations around in eight, and for, it's a little confusing for some of the sponsors and things. It just communicates better our relationship and her authority and the, and the, and the scheme of things. But it was a long discussion about changing that. It was amazing, amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah. But, so I, I will be the, the last President, the first Chair. You know, so history in the making. My gosh. And then thank you, Randy, and to the entire staff, to everyone here for the KSDE conference. It was, it was a great conference. And the roundtable with the business representatives that we had there was, was an excellent conversation. And I know we got a lot of notes from that to make, to move on. It's American Education Week next week. If you want to contact your schools and, you know, participate in some of their recognition activities that, you know, I'd encourage you to do that. It's a big week and a lot of, and, and we should celebrate. And I would say this, Mr. Roberts, the new definition of failing schools, we had only one mark. We have schools that are challenged by many things, but under AYP, there was only one grade that was given. It was a pass/fail. And too many people associated in the past that one mark as determining a failed school. You know, and we have schools, as we're heading into a new way of identifying schools that have different levels of need. You know, so I, I want to eliminate the word failing. That has connotations that go well beyond what, what is happening in some of these schools. Some of these schools that are identified as, as high need schools are actually doing great things. And it's only that set of schools that are in the title program that get, have that distinction. It's an unfair, it's, the rules are all set up wrong. So that was my contention by saying no failing schools.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that.
Yeah. The, the, the rules were stacked against them, and it was a public relations issue as much as anything. Randy, your tours are, are going great. You know, personally, I, I was exhausted after the two days that I went, but you're way younger than me. I, I, you know, it wasn't that so much that they were new schools that I'd never seen or been to, or administrators that I'd never met, but it was nice to meet Board members and students and to see the local press and, and then to see the great things that are happening. There wasn't one school we went to that didn't have pride about, real intrinsic pride about what they were doing. You know, and all knew their challenges, you know, but all could, could celebrate and recognize the great things that are happening in their districts. And, and they're unique, what, what was going on in Winfield and what was going on in Caldwell and what was going on in just Caldwell and South Haven, which happened to be about 13, 14 miles apart. Different worlds, you know, but both striving to be, to meet the needs of their kids in very unique ways in their community. Boy, they're making things happen, you know, but they were very open about the challenges they face and what we can do to, to assist them. And we need to do that. For your consideration as a Board, we've heard a number, you know, of people talk about legislative efforts. We are in fact doing that, working behind the scenes, trying to pull some meetings together that you may hear of with just a couple of days' notice, because that's all the time we have. So if you say, well, why didn't you tell me, you know, last week that, or two weeks ago, we didn't know? Because we have the election and, and there were some surprises, you know, and they're trying to sort out the legislature now, their leadership and what they're doing. So we are, are working behind the scenes to put some efforts together, not only with the legislature, but with other groups, you know, that, that we have, that we partner with, you know, to create those. And it would be, it wouldn't be good to announce something here and say plan on it and then it looks like we failed because we couldn't pull it together, you know, but we are, are certainly doing those. And they could be around the state, they could be here in Topeka. And, and we are reaching out. And one of the things we will do is send a packet to all the, a public relations packet to all of the legislators new and, and returning about our vision and materials that we have and that, the, the draft document we saw yesterday will be a key part of that. I, I think it's not just telling them about our vision and where we want to go, it's telling them the stepping stones we've made already and the steps we've made already and the steps that are about to happen like we're going to have here shortly when we meet. So there are things happening and, and things are moving fast, they're changing daily. And I'll, we'll, we'll get that information to you as quickly as we can. The last thing I'm going to say is go back to Randy's, you know, tours and. The last thing I'm going to say is go back to Randy's, you know, tours. And if you, I hope you've all had the opportunity. We've had some recently where he was in my area. There is one thing that, that, that stands out. Randy has, is, has been a face for the department, but he's also been a voice for us. You know, and I thank him for the positive responses that I get from the communities. They feel like we as a board, the Department of Education and the commissioner are on their side. And I don't know if they felt that way four years ago. You know, it wasn't that things were terrible, but they really feel like we're on their side and we're really listening. And I, I, I want to thank Randy for taking the lead in making that happen. You know, we've made some tough decisions and we certainly have as a board and individually, you know, worked very hard. But I do want to compliment Randy, you know, publicly. You've changed our face and the face of the department across the state in a very positive way. Now, our challenge is to build on that and to move forward. You know, take a moment to celebrate, to recognize and appreciate. But our next challenge is, is to make this, to keep that alive and move forward as people expect us to. So, thank you to Randy, thank you to the board, thank you to the department, all the people who are here serving us today and, and, what do we have, 270 some people? You know, there's, there's a new sense, it's my opinion, you know, alone. And, and I'm not asking for affirmation, but just as a report back, that we've got their back, that we're, we're, they're with us. And that's a real challenge for us, you know, to make it work, to keep doing that. So, thank you. More travel and requests. Peggy, we have, others have to add to what they have already proposed or said. Janet?
Yes, tentatively, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday to meet with the attorney on the Ramos case. So, I'd just like travel for that, please. Here in Topeka.
And you too, Kath, no, Jim. Okay, you're double dipping.
Yeah, I've got the special ed thing on Monday. And then I have the teacher vacancy meeting on December. It's right after the meeting, is it the 15th? So, that'll just be an extended day.
Sally, you're at the Southwest Kansas Chamber on the 15th.
They moved it to the 29th and so we need to take that completely off because I'm in Denver at ECS.
Okay.
And then I got the teacher vacancy, I think. But I don't, I don't need anything for that because I, it's right after a board meeting. So, I'll just wait until home.
I'll need per diem.
I'll need probably per diem to stay.
Sorry. And then I'm going to try to go to KASB one day.
Oh, I forgot that. Oh, thank you for saying that. If I could just jump in here, while you mentioned that, I somehow missed it on my notes. I have, and I mentioned this at the last board meeting, on December 3rd, I have a session at the KSB conference in Wichita. And especially for, for those of us who are local, Ken and Kathy, it's at, I believe, 1:30, I'll get you the details. But any board members who would like to be in that session, I just said, it's just an opportunity for local board members to meet and talk with us, okay, about the vision or any other questions they have. I just saw it as an opportunity for communication and to connect. So, if you'd like to come down and, and join me, I will send your name in and just say you're going to be there for that session and what have you. I'm only going to be there for that day. I'm not going to the Friday or the, or the Sunday part, but I'll be there in the morning and, and through the session. And then it's a way for us to, to keep that vision alive, to keep that, that voice and face in front of the state board members. So, if you're willing to, you want to be there, let me know today and I'll let them know.
Is that session in the morning?
It's in the afternoon.
The afternoon?
Yes.
I'll, I'll try to, I'll do the best I can to be there.
Yeah, okay.
You'll send us the time and location?
It's December 3rd. Yes, it's Saturday afternoon and it's at 1:15. It's at the, in room, I'll give you the 209A Cypress, you know, it's up in that wing of, of stuff. No agenda, I'm going to have materials to pass out to them, it just, it's their questions. It's, it's just a dialogue session. There's no, you know, standing up and making a presentation and yanking at them, so.
And this, this is KASB?
KASB's, yes, you know, and. Okay, so Deana and Jim and Ken and Kathy and Carolyn, okay? But if you're, if you're in town, you know, yeah, I don't know how many people are going to show up. They estimated probably 40, you know, so there'll be plenty of people to talk to. It's, and it's just good for us to have a dialogue, opportunity dialogue and support their conference.
Jim, would they be comped if they just attend that section?
That's what I'm planning, yes. I'll clarify that with KASB's this afternoon, you know, that they're just coming as a presenter. Yeah. I got an invitation to just go and just had an ORAS VP, I don't know. I got a little thing in the mail that said they'd like to invite us and, you know, I sent, I just emailed them. You know, but I'll make sure. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Peggy? Please put me down for KASB.
I screwed that up.
All days or just the 3rd?
Other travel additions?
Jim?
Ken?
I'm going to participate in the SDAC Career Fair that's taking place on the 15th. It's just two day, but I'm only going to be there one day.
Yeah, I can't go.
Yeah, but I'm going to.
Thank you for going.
And just today, just salary for that. Then National, the November 30th to December 2nd, I'm going to be attending the National Summit on Education, Excellence in Education, just three day salary for that. All the expenses are paid. December 9th, the Educational Leaders and Professionals of Excellence Conference in Kansas City, Missouri. And I'll need to drive in the day before, so I'll need a per diem in salary and drive, and mileage. And then I'll, if I could add to that, that KASB event that Jim's working on, I'm going to try to make that as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I will just tell you all, I sent you all an email and John just told me I didn't include the link, so I'll try again.
You know, to find out about it, yes, let's not all call Gordon.
No, 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 no.
Gordon's on our Board of Directors, so I know him pretty well, so I'll, I'll give him a call.
He's a good guy.
You know, otherwise we'll all be calling Gordon and, you know, make it some conspiracy.
I think the information, there's enough information on it that we could craft something for ourselves out of it, so.
But I'll call Gordon and get his firsthand information.
Great.
Yeah. And the orientation days and the, you know. Okay, Steve?
I too plan to attend the Foundation for Excellence three day conference, two and a half day conference in Washington. So, that'll be three day salary, similar to Ken's. And expenses are paid. I'd also like to go to the Complete High School Mays Thanksgiving Feast.
It's a good deal.
On November 22nd. So, I guess that would be mileage only. The 18th Annual Thanksgiving Feast at the Complete High School in Mays.
The Alternative High School in Mays has a Thanksgiving, public relations, that different board members from around, that from Mays and business and community agency people, they, they have a big wing ding, you know, for lunch.
I'll share this with you, it's from 11 to 1 on the 22nd.
They do a nice job. It's, and it's fun to, to see the, the kids take a lot of pride in it. We've had them here a number of times and it just came the other day. Yeah, it just came the other day. It comes from the students. Okay, anything else? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the mileage as proposed. Deana Horace, second by Jim Porter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Most passes 10-0. Thank you very much. I think that's, we, we'll take a break and then we'll reassemble here in, in 15 minutes. So, or 15 minutes, 10:35. At 10:35 and we'll, we'll get into our session. Has everybody paid their lunch money? All right.